Call this meeting ordered. The rise of the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to their beloved and faithful citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are here tonight for the non-binding review of the Townships 2016 budget. Everybody should have a copy. Does everybody have a copy of their?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Any discussion on them? Mr. Strong, do you have anything?
No. They're not all the same. So I would suggest we take them in order, one at a time.
Okay.
And Mr. Strong, can I give a response? I did talk to DLGF Rep. Lane Hudson about why some of those amounts on those AVs are separate. When the townships did their worksheets, the certified NAB was not yet finished with the assessor's office and through my office. So they were just using numbers that they had at the time. So we said there aren't going to be differences, but the final amount would be based on what the certified net assessed value is when it comes down to it.
Okay, that explains the difference in the their AV numbers.
Like with the library and the school corporation.
Exactly. Well, thank you for checking on that.
All right.
Do we sign these as we go or what?
The instructions. And bear with me because I had to, you know, just with this being my first year, if you'll notice, on each worksheet, there is a signature for either the council president or a presiding member of the council that the president would have been absent to sign. What DLGF is expecting council to do is review each one, whether you take them individually or do a vote as a whole after you review them. They just want to know if there's any recommendations, the changes will be written on each township's worksheet, signed by the president since he is here, after council votes to approve or disapprove or approve with changes. So that's the instructions that I can forward on to you from DLGF. Is that clear?
Okay.
Okay. Well, first up is Columbia Township.
Okay.
I'm going to accept it.
I'll second so we discuss it. Down the old fire way. The Columbia Township budget is 83.99% above the state growth quotient. So I would recommend that their budget be held within the 2.6% state growth quotient like any other taxing units budget is going to be held to.
2.6.
Oh, let's put that B then. Yeah, 2.6. Look at your sheet in front of you there, Mark.
Yeah. Yeah, see it?
Yep. The first box is budget.
Yes.
Difference between state growth quotient.
Yeah. County growth quota.
Right. You see that?
Yes.
Okay.
So the state would go 2.6.
Their requested budget is actually almost 85% of the 2015 certified budget. So we know that the state is not going to allow any budget to grow over 2.6%. You follow me on that?
Yep.
So we would be talking about that. Now, I would recommend that that would be the council's recommendation.
What was your matter? I've got a question here. It says your state growth quotient, and then it says 2.7. That's for '14 to '15. This is '15 to '16, and it says 2.6.
It did go down.
So that's what it is.
Right.
The 2.6.
2.6% is the state growth quotient, yes.
Yeah, that's all in the last.
So we're okay?
No.
No. They're asking for 80%, 85% more than that.
Look at the increase in their proposed budget and see the difference.
See, what he's saying, if they would go with a 2.6, they would actually go up to $9,219. And so on. If you go 2.6. So 92, well, 92.20. I agree, if state's not going to allow any more, then that's stick with the state.
We should cap all of that right off the start.
Yeah, well, not all of them are going to be over. Some are going to be under.
Yes.
This particular one is way over. So that's. Keep in mind the way we've always done these before, we've always held them to the state growth quotient. I see no reason to change it.
And the state will allow them to do more. It's just.
So would you like to amend your motion?
Here. First thing, we're thinking it's all false.
Let's do all.
They have to qualify as 2.6, and we don't even think about it.
You can't do them all at one time, Mark, so they're not all the same.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about our procedure to go with.
If we do them all at the 2.6.
Well, as we progress through these, you'll see the difference.
Okay. Well, we ain't going to make it unfair for everybody. We're going to make everybody 2.6 for the heck of it.
There you go. It's simple.
Well, what if they're not asking for 2.6?
Well, they can boost yours up a little bit, Dan.
2.6 or lower.
Yeah, there you go, 2.6 or lower.
Thank you.
I kicked Spiderwood's head.
But you got that.
Did you get an amendment to the motion?
He wanted amended, but he hasn't amended. So we wanted amended too.
How do you want a motion made? On this one, we're talking about Columbia, so let's just say we stick to the 2.6.
Yeah, we'll change to 2.6 on Columbia.
Originally, you said just to, your motion was originally to approve it as is.
Well, I'll withdraw your motion.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your motion, so does that mean we want to make a motion? And how do you want to word it?
I'll make it approve it at 2.6 percent.
So your motion is to approve Columbia Township to stay within the 2.6% state growth quotient?
Yes.
Your second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, the whole state motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Ayes, ahs. Is there one nay?
No.
Ayes, ahs.
I'm going to, just as a matter of procedure, now I wrote on this, but that can be wiped out, and I'm just going to type in what those changes are on each one.
Okay.
And then, Mike, if you would just go through as council president, just stamp it on the line, and I'll make those changes per council's direction.
Next up is Council City.
I make a motion to leave it as is at 12,599,510.
Second.
Which is lower than 2015.
Do you have a motion to approve? Council Civil City. After their proposed budget, you have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries. Council Township.
I make a motion to leave it at 277,900, same as last year. Second.
Was that Mr. Wolf who seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve Council Township proposed budget. You have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries. Fairview Township.
I make a motion to not exceed the 2.6 which they are right now. 2.6 would take the total up to for 16,0233.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor to accept Fairview Township budget, but it has to be within the 2.6 state growth quotient. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did I say that correctly? Okay.
We know what you say.
Thank you. I'm glad you're ahead of me. Is there any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries. Fayette County Public Library.
I make a motion to make it at 942,270, which is under the 2.6.
Yes?
Yep, 2.78.
What was that number, Mark?
Pardon?
Mark, Plum, what was that number you said?
Yeah, it would be 942,278.
Oh, okay.
But I would leave it at the 270 that they asked for. So there are $8 on it.
So leave it as is?
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor to accept Fayette County Public Library. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Fayette County School Corporation.
I want to cut this, but I don't know where I have to.
They're spending too much money.
They're hiring an assistant.
$36,000 or $60,000?
They're under the 2.6% state growth quotient, Mark.
They are right now?
Yeah.
Well, I still want to cut them. I think if they got money to give the superintendent two raises and a car in a year, they got too much money, period. That's the way I feel about them. And hire an assistant when this school was small.
And they settled a contract with the teachers and never went back. They done the custodians from the year before. They still don't have a contract for two years now.
Isn't that kind of school board's responsibility, though? Just asking.
Huh?
Isn't that the school board's responsibility to be doing that?
Evidently. Somebody ought to tell them, "Get off their back."
I'll move to accept the Fayette County School Corporation's budget as it's presented.
We have a motion to accept Fayette County School Corporation's budget as proposed, as presented. Is there a second?
I'll pass the gavel down. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Mark, do you have any discussion?
No, I don't have any discussion. I'm ready to go.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, I'm pretty sure the nays have it.
Do they have an assistant?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're just crazy. They do whatever, hide these ones.
Let's get this thing left to center then. What you want to do.
I guess if anyone has any grievances with the school system, I guess now is a good time to air them.
Well, I just aired mine.
Send them back to school, let them figure it out. That's what they make the big money for.
Well, fellas, it's our responsibility to make a recommendation. What do you want to recommend?
See, lowly 35,302 last year.
I think we know transportation is going to be what it is. School pension debt's going to be what it is. Debt service.
Well, I'm sure they got money in your budget they could cut.
I think you. You deal with these jumping bus replacements. I'm sure their proposed budget is padded there. They'll get whatever the DLGF wants.
DL, can we make a motion to send it back to them, and we recommend that they make cuts and let them figure out where they want to cut? Can we do that? I mean, or should we actually give them a figure where we think we want them to be at?
It'd be helpful if you gave them a figure.
I'll tell you, Mark, unless you're prepared to do all the math in their budget, I'd be real careful if I were you.
Well, I'll make a motion if we send it back to the school board and let them figure out where they need to make some cuts. That's my motion for right now, seeing how that goes.
I'll second it.
Would you like to put a dollar figure on this?
No.
No, it's up to them. We know there's money they can cut.
So let them cut it.
That's what, it seems like they keep grabbing the money and grabbing the money. Everybody else is doing without. Let them do some cuts.
Okay. Councilman Plum has made a proposal to reject the proposed budget for the Fayette County School Corporation, to send it back to them. It's been seconded by Councilman Nabi. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Ayes, ahs. Harrison Township.
You do have to sign it with those recommendations, which I'll have to have on there.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to leave as is, 31,131,950, same as last year.
We have a motion on the floor to accept Harrison Township proposed budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Plum, you had the motion.
You second.
Jim Wolf. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries. Jackson Township.
I'll move to accept Jackson Township trustee budget as presented.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept Jackson Township proposed budget.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Jennings Township.
I'll move that the Jennings Township trustee budget be held within the 2.6% state growth quotient.
Second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept Jennings Township proposed budget with the stipulation that it remain within the 2.6 state growth quotient. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries.
Mike, that would be 4617 if you wanted to mark it down.
Orange Township.
I make a motion to leave it at 3580, which is less than last year.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to accept Orange Township's proposed budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, ahs. Motion carries. Posey Township.
I make a motion to reduce it to stay within the 2.6, which would be 25,973.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to accept Posey Township proposed budget with the stipulation that it also remain within the 2.6% state growth quotient. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Waterloo Township.
I have a question on Waterloo. They have their township assessor hasn't been paid from the year, or the previous term, and the new one hasn't been paid since he got in office. So they don't have enough money to cover.
How much would that be for us to pay?
If I can remind the council that the salaries for township trustees are not under the jurisdiction of Fayette County Council. Our attorney did verify that with DLGF and was made part of the record.
So where's the money come from?
The money comes from the tax levies. And what happens, as it's been explained to me, is that most township trustees take their salary off the top before they do their distributions. And in this situation, it appears that the salaries weren't taken off first, and the money was distributed to those, you know, fire departments and other assistants as designated for the townships, and there wasn't enough, apparently, to pay the trustee. But this matter did come before the council earlier this year, and it was explained that it never has been and currently is not the jurisdiction of county council to set those salaries.
Well, if they come and sue, who are they going to sue? They're going to sue the county, aren't they, to give you money?
Because it's not under the county's jurisdiction, I don't have an answer for you.
Not going to be us, because we have no control over it.
Well, I think we're leaving them guys in the window. That's not right.
I think the Waterloo Township trustee, if I recall, has been told by the DLGF, the only way he can get help in his situation is through legislation by the state legislature. And that hasn't happened, and I don't know that.
Well, I don't see why. They're owed that money. For their work. You work for somebody, you expect to get paid.
I understand that perfectly.
So they should be paid regardless of what the state's got to say.
And I agree with this, not with that, but what you're saying, we can't, we can't do anything about.
No.
It's got to come to.
We're setting up a precedent here.
It's got to come to the state at this point in time.
This is a, you know, the township is a civil taxing unit, just like all the other taxing units, and that's, we really can't interfere.
Well, what's going to happen when we get sued?
When we get sued?
Yeah.
Nothing.
When we're going to get sued?
There's nothing we can get sued for. It's not our problem.
If the Fayette County owes them money, they're going to get sued.
We don't owe money.
The Fayette County does.
No, we don't owe them any money. It's not our, we don't, we didn't do anything. We didn't create the situation. This is a state problem.
So you're saying if it.
So they're going to sue the state.
They're going to sue the state. There's nothing, it's not our, it's not our, we didn't do it. We're not doing it.
Well, it's up to you to get in there and fight for the guys.
The township owes its trustee.
I don't care what it is. It's still right.
The township owes its trustee. I, you know, I know what you're saying. I'm very hit in a bad situation out there. Mark, the taxing money's not coming in, but if he was paid, he needs to pay himself first before he pays anything else.
Well, I don't know. Call them, and I'm going to tell them, "Go ahead and grab all the money they can have it."
There's no money in there to.
Well, they can take everything that's there.
Right, right.
So in that case, I'll make a motion if we leave, we reduce Waterloo to the.
No, we leave them. It's likely they are.
Okay. Mr. Plum, it's your motion. You're making the motion. What do you want?
I was going to make a motion that we reduce it to the 2.6 maximum growth.
Okay.
Which would be 82, which would be 8231. Now, you want to discuss, we agree. Okay, you made the motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to accept Waterloo Township's proposed budget with the stipulation that it also remain within the state growth quotient of 2.6%. We seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
We do well call out.
All right. Councilman Wenta?
Yes.
Councilman Strong?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
No.
Councilman Plum?
Yes.
Councilman Nabi?
No.
Councilwoman Strong or Wise, excuse me.
Holy.
That's the second time I've done that.
Holy smoke.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize again for that. And Councilman Seidel?
Uh, no. Okay.
Or no.
The important nays have it. Okay, motion does not pass.
Okay, I got a question then. Make another motion here.
Well, and the reason for doing it is because that's still allowing you guys money to pay the sessions.
Okay, but my question is, what you're saying, they never got paid for the one?
One year.
One year, okay.
No, no. This one term.
One term.
And then the new term that started January.
Yeah. Do we have a dollar figure with that for total? One term plus one year? Is there any way that can be determined?
What are they paid?
I don't know. I have no idea what they get paid.
That's the state.
Is he 200 different?
Everyone different.
Everyone 100 different.
You'd have to get that from the trustee.
State censer salary.
So we didn't get that from the trustee?
State censer salary.
I don't know. I think their board does.
Oh, the board sets their salary. Is the board paid?
Advisory board?
Is their advisory board paid?
They probably get, yeah, they get paid. Yes, they get paid.
So now there's advisory board out there, Waterloo being paid?
I don't know.
I don't know.
They're probably, they probably.
They probably paid them. What are you wanting to do, Mr. Plum?
I'm not recommending anything right now. I just asked that question, and we can't establish that, so I'm not recommending anything right now.
Mark, where are they going to get paid? Where will they get paid from the county? How's the county going?
I don't know. It ain't our business, according to what they're saying.
They're a taxing unit. The county collects the taxes.
They don't have enough money to make their payments.
Right. But the county general, we don't give them nothing.
Nope. So he's got to get it out of here.
Yeah, but he's going to get so much.
Well, I'd say give them everything you're asking for right now until we get that settled.
Well, why do we say it's non-binding? The states will come and say.
Then we'll say, and then they can put what they want.
One reason I'm saying is, money needs to come from somewhere.
That's the state's problem, not ours.
But he needs to grab his off the top.
Is this the only township that this?
Yeah. Well, I think, well, the town, probably, I think, we can prove who the.
So I'm going to, I'm going to. Waiter forgot to tell you.
Trump, Trump just called me.
Trump, Trump just called me. Trump's calling me tonight.
Probably telling him to start.
What phone you got there?
Trump's calling me.
Well, Mike, okay, Mike, I'll make a motion, we leave as is and let's see what the state comes back with.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Yep, let's do that.
I understand you guys wanting to make a statement here and I agree with, but I know that the DLGF is not going to...
We don't care what the DLGF says. We're going to throw it up to them, let them decide.
Let them come back to us and see what... We can explain, we can explain where we're coming from and then let them go.
Well, I'll go along with you on this, just to let, just to let you make your statement. And, and I want to see your faces when you get your reply from the DLGF.
It'd be just like talking to that wall, what's going to be.
Yeah.
We'll listen to what the wall's got to say. We're just sitting in the wall.
We have a motion on the floor to accept their proposed budget as is. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Ayes have it.
There being no further business before the council and putting non-binding reviews, maybe we adjourn this.
I'd like to remind council, I want to, council, I'd like to remind you that once we adjourn, we do it one more session after this immediately. Don't go anywhere. We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. I'm going to adjourn. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we adjourn.
These are, this is the grant proposal for this year. Really, she hasn't had a chance to do a lot with it because we've been waiting to talk to you all, but I just wanted you to see the totals for the grant that we're working with. More, I'm sorry, I didn't make it up. What we're wanting to do, and this is based on whether or not we get an immunization grant that we applied for, we should have heard by now, but we're working with the state, so it takes longer than you anticipate most of the time. But with the local health maintenance funds and the tobacco settlement funds that the state has, we would like to combine those and pay for salary and benefits for a full-time nurse to help me with mainly what she would be doing probably is doing the immunization aspect of it. So bring me up to do the syringe exchange and the investigations and things like that. So we just need your approval to go ahead and finish the grant. It's due October 1st. So we're kind of getting crunch time here. But it's, we definitely need more nursing staff and myself, and she's part-time right now.
Okay, follow up, let me get this straight of this. You and I haven't had a chance to talk about this yet. The current part-timer, this, this grant application that you're involved in right now is aimed at being able to make her full-time
Right.
with, with her salary and benefits paid by the grant.
Yeah, it would be completely grant funded. There wouldn't be any, any county funds required at all. It would be totally...
Okay, what does this, what does the tobacco settlement money and the other one you named have to do with this?
That, that's the, those are the, I'm sorry. The, those are the two, the local health maintenance and the tobacco money are the funds that we've used previously for part-time salary and supplies, things like that. Those kinds of things would be funded through the immunization grant that we applied for if we get it. If we don't get it, then just, we can't go ahead and get her full-time and we'll have to...
This is a year-to-year thing, so then what happens next year if we don't get the grant?
Then she won't be full-time.
So the thirteen thousand and eighty-eight dollars, is that what you're asking for from that tobacco cessation money?
I think, I haven't had an opportunity to work with her, with Kristen, on this. I believe the dollars that we're working with are the ones up at the top in the yellow and the green, seventeen thousand, seven eighty-eight and thirty-three thousand. I'm sorry.
So would that be the sum of the two? So in other words, you would use it to pay salaries instead of to purchase the nicotine patch and the gum and the what-have-you?
Right, it would be...
You know, having felt, felt really strong about the importance of that program and still feel that, can people still go down and get the nicotine patch from the health department?
We won't, probably won't be able to have the patches and it's, it's a... It's not a well-utilized program, I'm sorry to say. We have people come in, they'll come in for the first time, then we never see them again, so the...
People aren't taking advantage of it.
And what about the gum, the nicotine?
We just do, have gone down to just the patches. So we just supply the patches. And we've been signed up with the state for the quit now. We can refer people there. So we have the applications for that. And we'll send that into the state. The state will contact them and the state offers patches and all kinds of cessation assistance and everything. So they would still be, be able to, to get it.
After going through, after jumping through hoops instead of being able to get it down at the health department, which is, I mean, I believe that was the intention of the tobacco award.
Yeah. And, and she would be in charge of the, getting them in touch with the state, getting the state and coordinating all that.
I think there's no lack of people in Fayette County that would like to quit. I think they probably...
And they, they have attempted it, they just, very few come back. We even did it so they would come back every two weeks. So, you know, we could talk to them, see how they're doing and as opposed to giving them...
Yeah, I think it is a program that needs one-on-one
It is.
Communication. And it's, it's like you say, check on how they're doing and be able to pick up another week's worth of patches.
And even, we, we refer them to the state, the quit now program now, and they'll contact them. And then we haven't had one person say that they haven't, haven't been in touch with them. And they'll send them booklets and, and they can also, they, they will send the patches and things like that. But it's just, the success rate is... We target, with our grant, we, we like wanted, I think it was like a three or, or four percent of, it was like a very small amount of people that we have in the program that we want to have successfully complete. And they, we can't even reach that goal with them.
Well, you know, it's not an easy thing.
No.
People that are hooked on tobacco, I mean, it's, it is a terrible addiction. But I'm glad that people never gave up with me. And I think there's probably other people, you know, in the county that would say that same thing. Many people have come back to me because I know that I was part of a wellness program where we went to quit, you know, Great American Smokeout. Does our Fayette County participate in the Great American Smokeout? I mean, I think that these funds are for that, that kind of activity and for, I'm sure the health department is involved in other quote, "health promotion" activity. But I, I think that it's important to use these funds to help people stop smoking and to make them aware of the dangers, et cetera. I mean, go put up a billboard or something with the money. I'm sure that the, that the, going from part-time to full-time, they can help with that. But I would just like to see maybe a higher amount of effort going to help these people because it is, it is discouraging.
It, it is. I agree.
But if they made that first trip to the health department to try, then I think it's worthwhile to continue to work on those people. You know that there, they just need a little help.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you help Dale any? He's got some bad habits.
He's hidden us, patches and even both.
I'm not going to preach it to anyone for smoking.
Is there, is there two grants here that you're applying for?
Right.
And you're going to use the tobacco grant for salary for the nurse?
Yeah, and I, I'm not...
Is that what I understand?
It, it won't all, I don't believe it will all be spent.
But there's no guarantee we're going to get any of it, right?
This, these two are things that we apply for every year.
Yeah, I know we have.
And it's...
We have never been turned down, I don't think.
Right. I'm knocking on wood. But it's, the immunization grant is the new one that we've applied for that we haven't heard anything about yet. We were supposed to hear it at the end of August. But they moved from one floor to the other, so they got busy and...
So Paul, October 1st is deadline for your submission of this?
Right, for these two, they have to be in by October the 1st.
Now, you can get by, you can get by by getting the tobacco grant and you can use that for a salary for the nurse. Is that, is that right? That can be done.
Yeah. Yeah, we've, we've been working with Diana, right, with all of this and the, counter nicely the state grant.
So then next year, we would have to do the same thing, apply for these two grants if we have a full-time nurse?
Possibly. What, or what we hopefully may be able to do is if, if we get the immunization grant, is we could incorporate a salary into that.
And then our tobacco grant would go back to tobacco?
Right. It would free that up for, for supplies and...
To help the people that's, the smokers.
I move that we approve the request, the grant request by the health department.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the grant request. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
On that, can we tag that job to that grant? If we lose grant, then we lose the person, you know, we're not going to take it out of the funds.
Yes, I know there's no other funds that are taken out, Mark.
That's what I'm saying, you tie it to the grant.
It, it's, it is tied to the grant. I mean, if there's no grant, there's no position. Just like the community corrections. If that grant money dries up, it all goes away.
She would go back to part-time.
Right, and she's been involved in all this, so she's, she knows the risks and she knows...
So I asked her what happens if we, is a year-to-year thing, because she said, well, she goes back to part-time then. Unfortunately.
Did you say this includes fringe benefits as well?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. We have no further business.
Second.
Motion adjourned, second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay? Nay. Motion carries. That's why I'm saying nay.